Would you please stand and salute the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which we stand, one nation, united. Thank you. For me. Like the biggest crowd we've had in here. First, the next thing on the agenda is the approve the minutes of April night that. Uh, May third. Nice, when I saw it was good.
I make a motion, we approve both sets of minutes.
The only thing I had to add is just because some of my eyes were E's, so not on yours. But it was her first time, so everybody thinks Kristen is an Ian, but it's an Ian. And it was some in some one way and some the other way, so it's the same old thing. All right, not mine with an I, so just remember your name's with an I, mine's with an I. It'll be easy, I'm a ten, not a ten, yes. I am not a ten and no E on the end either.
Not an E.
No.
Our second motion would be a line correction.
So it's made a motion to approve the minutes of both those meetings and Mark has seconded it with a correction in the spellings. Uh, all those in favor? Thank you. And next is uh, the bid opening for the Cocknowaggin Dam repair.
Want to do this, Jesse, because if you're bit, you might be able to read it off faster. This is Jesse, he's our engineer for the project. Yeah, sure.
First bid we have is from Esther Field Associates out of West Rhode Island. Two hundred thousand dollars even. Second bid we have is from Gordon Contracting out of Stangerville. And that is four. Three hundred and ninety-four thousand. There.
Yes. Oh, Jesse, he did come here tonight in case you had any questions about the school project or anything, because we haven't had it. If you have any questions, he's here to answer them.
Excellent. Um, question for you, Justin. Uh, what is it that we're asking, what is the figure we're asking the voters for in June to?
Sure, let me bring that, let me bring that up because it's a, it's a combined article for the, it's the dam, the Beaver Brook and the Winth, and the, uh, right. Okay, if you give me a second, I'll turn that up, you, I don't recall what the exact number was. Jesse, could you remember what, it was the number you put, yes.
At the base three?
Yeah.
Don't remember.
I don't.
Chesterfield did Litchfields. And last year, and they came in early and under budget, I believe.
They did, yes.
So.
So these are the folks that sort of figured out the way to thread the needle with, in, in Litchfield. With uh. Uh, kind of a unique approach to solving their problem.
Yeah, they, they're, they're really good to work with, they had a slightly, slightly different concept, but it was essentially the same, but they. Little bit pile to shut off the leak on a, on a batter instead of straight down. That was uh, Dave Allen's idea that worked. They were wonderful to work with, so nothing bad things, nothing but good things to say about them.
What extra do they propose to do that drives the uh, their bid up?
Extra, I don't, um.
Gordon, yeah.
Well, Gordon deserves. There's nothing in their bid that would be extra at work, it would be same in the product. Difference in price, I, I can't really. Too unsure what drives the differences, relatively big spread though, for sure.
Right. Any lower bid does good work.
Yes.
Can you give us an idea of the scope of work? That we're anticipating and, and perhaps a little bit about the timeframe for? I know there are a number of Cocknowaggin residents in the audience tonight, we'd be very curious to know.
Um, yes, the, the industry, it would have to be done between July fifteenth and October first, I believe it is. That's just the time they were doing the window, um, I wouldn't want to speak specifically to. Either contractor, but I would imagine that the in and out within a few weeks from starting would be my guess. Be demo. Bring out pouring and then the miscellaneous components that have to be installed after the fact, as it's only three works.
Lake level, how, how is this going to form to the current lake level to what is going to be during construction and after?
The, my understanding was that the lake level would not, they're going to have to coffer dam it either way, so the level of the lake at the time of construction aren't really going to impact. Construction, it's going to be, when I say coffer, it's actually sandbags around it, the water just long enough to. Set the footings and then what we're calling the cutoff oil. Water level at that, it is not. Not that construction.
But wouldn't interfere with uh, winter, uh, excuse me, summer activities on the lake?
Not for the residents or people like recrea- recreationally using the lake, um, there would be some. Coordination between contractors and other people trying to put their boat in, um, understanding is that there's no access through either of the budding properties, so. They're going to have to set up in their staging area, bring what they need down at any given time and then barge over to the work site, so. There would be just coordination within the boat launch area itself.
There's no possibility of one of the owners allowing access for?
That would have been probably better, um, my understanding was that the town didn't really want to get involved in any sort of temporary easements through private property. Uh, you know. I'm just saying, you know, worrying that something could happen and then being stuck in the middle between the contractor and private owner. Which is why we didn't specifically put that into the contract.
What we did is we gave them contact information to each of the butters, each of the butters, they didn't have that until probably just a couple of weeks ago. So whether that's figured into their bid or not, may impact the price because, well, they did indicate that. If they were, if they were forced to barge, it would increase the price, you know, because they have to, so the price that we have may include that barging, so depending on what would happen, it may, may or may not come down, I don't, I don't know. We haven't had a chance to review these in any detail.
And what was the figure that we have on the ballot for June?
Well, it's, it's a combined article, but that portion of it, we had estimated to be about a hundred, hundred, hundred thirty, hundred thirty thousand dollars. So I suspect that, you know, I mean, that was. Couple of estimates and then time goes by while you're doing it, and then also we don't know if they figured in the barging into that, we did hear the barging, they're very expensive, one vendor, I think. Indicated they, they wouldn't bid because of that, they didn't think they could afford to.
And you said this would be done between July?
July fifteenth and October first. And they can be in the water, just for me. The Army Corps did potentially talk about getting it out to a different window, but I think there was other concerns with. That's and, you know, a few different things they're concerned with.
So. You don't have to do, you can't do anything with this tonight because we, we can't approve any type of thing until the warrant article passed. It was just a bid opening, it will sit until after the election and then. At that point, you could ask us to try and negotiate or figure out the details of, of the bid at that point, but now it's just a bid open.
Assuming the warrant arti- article passes, um, you might want to give some thought to how we close the budget gap.
The most, I mean, the most obvious thing to do would be to figure out how to supplement the. The Beaver Brook over, because that's the rest of the money, so. The articles for almost four hundred thousand combined for that end would be very fond to him, so. There's enough money and it's just a matter, then you got the debt, you got a problem with the next one too, so.
Anything else? No, okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure, you, you want me to send you copies, do you need to, want to review these?
Just the numbers, that's all I need for the.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
See you.
You too.
Inspector Department report.
You're locked in.
Well, good evening, been, it's been a few weeks since I've been here. Busy schedule, I apologize for that, but. Um, I did look at some statistics over the past six weeks, I had made the last couple, so. Going back to the first, first of April, uh, in the past six weeks, the fire department being fairly busy, we actually responded to twenty-seven incidents. Would have been for a small department like us. Of course, the most known, the incidents were the big fire on the hill there, Uber Farms and uh, smaller fire TJ's Pizza area. I like to think both fires were successful, stops and, you know, we saved a lot of property, uh, both of those incidents, so hats off to the fire crews in the towns. Other than that, a lot of, a lot of car accidents, grass fires, much of minor, minor incidents. Uh, Fire Department held its annual dinner, uh, week ago, uh, it was a new venue for us, uh, we did it down at the Memorial School. Worked out really well, uh, so glad to get into the school finally and turn out that facility and we had a lot of good positive feedback, so. Just to highlight, uh, our two main awards that evening, uh, Jason Roy, uh, one of our newest firefighters a couple of years ago, uh, got Fire Department of the Year. And Austin Smith, uh, one of our juniors, got the junior Fire Department of the Year. Uh, recently, we've been working hard, leading training, mandatory training, finally got pure labor standard training completed a hundred percent. Uh, medical evals, it was twenty-five of us that had to chase down and get those completed, so we're SCBA, uh, clearances and uh. Currently, or we just completed our officer evals, uh, Monday night, so. A lot of the events going on entirely administration wise. In a way, I'm getting into our summer months now, where we start doing some practical training and getting outside. Uh, Saturday, speaking outside, we're going to be down Jellystone Campground, send an engine down there, even though technically not in our town, we are first due for the campground. Um, I know we have a couple lots, uh, that's technically lawless, so they reached out to us, I think they reached out to other fire departments that share that. We're the only one that responded, saying, yeah, we'll send a truck, it's their hero weekend and they just want to have fire apparatus down there, sparky. Uh, touch, called touch a truck with young children of the campground, gives us an opportunity to kind of learn, learn the campground and see, you know, any changes they've made and. We'll go real slow over the culver.
You might want to go fast.
Also on Saturday, uh, we're going to be doing our annual flag detail about all our former members' grave sites and fire department flags. Prior to that, a lot of juniors participate in that. So, that as well, hopefully the rain will, so supposed to get a tippy rain Saturday, thank, thank you. Um, on Monday, May twenty-ninth, that's going to be our memorial day, uh, breakfast from seven to ten, so we're going to put that on. Welcome you to come, veterans eat for free and um, we'll also be doing a parade in. Google time, eleven o'clock will be the start of the parade. Memorial service will be nine thirty of the north. Exclusion of the parade shortly after eleven. And then just to put a shout out for the Monmouth Beach Party, I put a social media blast today, our seventh annual beach party, uh, it's going to be on July eighth. Now, the Cocknowaggin Beach, uh, Beach. Um, check Facebook for more information, get closer, I'm sure we'll work with other agencies, uh, fine tune any logistics. Then the last thing I have is, I just wanted to bring it to your attention that, um, I had reached out to Mary Turner recently about the old firehouse downtown. That's a original center station structure built in nineteen oh four, we incorporated nineteen oh three at the fire department, so that was our first firehouse, um. Fortunately, it was scheduled to be demolished, still is scheduled to be demolished, uh. Section permit out there for that, or demo permit. And when the first building came down on that quarter acre parcel, um, I saw that open space and I just came up with an idea. And I approached Mary before the second building got torn down, which was the old firehouse, um, she pretty settled out to a lot of us firefighters here in town. Approached her and said, can you just put a pause, and she graciously did that, um, but I got a short window opportunity. Um, and what I pitched to her was an idea to, uh, purchase the property from her through the town to. Convert the old firehouse into a firehouse museum to kind of fit in with the museum structure downtown. But also that vacant lot on the corner, turn it into our new nine eleven memorial. Current plans to put it at the center station is not going to work the greatest for us, you know, it's going to be crammed in, going to be under some overhead power lines, it's going to be where the town plows, the front of our pad. Um, it's just, it's not the greatest location, I feel like we'll question to put that in there, and maybe ten years from now, we're going to be in a new building, so. It makes sense that we can put this new nine eleven memorial someplace else, and I thought, hey, how about downtown? Beautify that corner, that nice flag pole, with some backlight and some greenery, some nice sitting, you know, park benches, trails. Just kind of beautify that corner, have a new firehouse as a backdrop, be a great concept. This would also help us with finding a home for our antique engine too, which is currently being housed, our private property, one of our firefighters. You know, we really should have that, uh, fire department or town owned property, um. Take it one step further, I approached cabin masters, main cabin masters here in town and see if they would partner with us, I got a hundred fifty percent support from them. And they said I could share publicly tonight that, uh, main cabin masters would actually partner with the fire department in the town of Monmouth to do a complete renovation of that property. And if we time it right, we do it for next summer, they're going to pitch it to their network and they think they could actually get that started like they're that, so. It's pretty cool, um, kind of a televised renovation of that property. To do all of that. Mary needs an answer. If the town, uh, purchased this property, so in the last couple of days, I've been working really hard, behind the scenes, talking to the town manager, a few of the select board members, uh. Mary, of course, and trying to work out opportunity to purchase that property so she can finally wash her hands of it. And she's willing to sell it at a discount, um, I'm sure she could probably get more money for it, she sold it, you know. But to do that, um, the town would need to purchase it, well, we, at first, we were looking to try to do it through TIF revenues, well, we found out today, um, cannot do that. Uh, we're hopeful that there's some revenues that gone, spent over the last ten years or so, that we can tap into and make this purchase happen, turns out we cannot do that. So, um, here, begging you, before this building gets torn down in the next week or two, um, is there any other opportunity that the town can do? To make this happen? And if not, you know, I might have a plan B, but Mary is willing to work with us, um. She had mentioned possibly doing a, on a finance deal, that might be something where I do a nonprofit entity and work out an agreement with her, we do something completely different. I'll share with you that this renovation would not be any cost to the town going forward, uh, I plan to do a hundred percent fundraising plus with partnership with cabin masters, it's not going to be any cost to the town. The only cause would be is if there's some way or some funds that I'm not aware of that you guys can help make the initial purchase. And then if it be, turn it over to the nonprofit entity, uh, to oversee the structure and running. Here's the comment. Any thoughts or suggestions? Or?
Can you give us a little background of? Uh, why there seems to be a square peg for our round hole TIF?
The TIF, so we, we caught, we gotten, Reagan got in touch with the town attorney today at my request and, uh. It's a, it's, it's, it's very difficult to use TIF money to, for the town to purchase property for itself. Under the economic development, uh, TIF, which is the one we have, there is an arts district TIF. That if we had one, um, Main Street would clearly qualify because of the museums and Comston Hall. And if we had an art TIF, then the town could potentially purchase it as, you know, if, if the intent was to make it, you know, an arts type museum, but we don't have one.
I could hang on the wall.
But we don't, we don't have one of those, so our, our program just doesn't allow us to purchase, um, town property for our own use.
Is it possible, uh, would we be able to purchase property for the purpose of parking?
Um, potentially, i- if you could claim that it was supporting, um, you know, business activity in the downtown, which maybe you could make that argument, that would be potentially legitimate, I'd have to check.
So, uh, we might, we might actually pursue that because I think right now there's sort of a. Unofficial, on the shoulder sort of parking spot, couple, three parking spots across from the general store where. You know, people are taking liberty with. The easement there and. And they park there to run into the general store.
Part of the road, it's always been paved there and that's part of the, the right way, but.
Just, I'm, I'm wondering if potentially it could.
It could create.
We could create some official parking space.
Three parallel parking spots there, or if you have them coming at a forty-five, you could potentially get four, maybe five parking spots there.
We could do the parking, but they wouldn't let us purchase the building.
Exactly.
So if you wanted, if you, it defeats the purpose of what they're here for, I mean, we, we could buy the lot and tear everything down and turn it into a parking lot, I think that would be a legitimate.
Yeah.
Use under the economic development fund, but they wouldn't let us use it to purchase the building for us to use to create three parking spots, they wouldn't, that, that wouldn't, that wouldn't fly. When that went to D E C D.
And we can't just decide to spend money without asking the town if they want.
So that's, that's our time, that's our time dilemma, so. You know, to Mary's defense, she, she would, she's got a contractor that's on hold that she's already, you know, committed to, and I think she was looking for an answer today. Whether this was a possibility, and if so, then we're going to discuss the timeframe, um, because. If you're going to put something to the town vote, we, you know, we're, we're already past due to hit it on the June ballot, so we'd have to look at the November ballot and let me do a special election, which, you know, is going to be costly and I don't see that happening. So, and, and Mary, she's not going to wait till November for, find out that the town might or might not support this, uh.
But you'd have to wait till November. Because the town would be voting. We could put it on the warrant, but we wouldn't know the answer. So.
What was your other plan?
So my other plan is to look at Mary. Mary, would you support the idea that if I created a Monmouth Fireman's Association as a five oh one C three, uh, entity nonprofit organization? Uh, that currently has twenty-six thousand dollars in, uh, in their fund to construct this nine eleven memorial? Um, if I was to, um, create this new organization and, um. Use it to fund this property, would you consider a, I'm just going to throw out maybe like a seven year, uh, owner financed lease. Purchase agreement with that organization? Where we would, you know, also pay for the taxes in addition to it, you know, during that seven year period, um, and it would give us a little more time, um. To do some additional fundraising, which I think over the next, probably two, maybe three years, we could almost fully fund it. But I need, you know, I obviously need time to draft up, you know, legal paperwork, get an accountant, attorney, draft all that up. You had mentioned you would might consider something to that effect, you know, if the town should do it, it sounds that I can't do it through the town, so I got to do it privately. And I don't want to do it through the auxiliary, uh, for a few reasons, I want to try to keep the auxiliary out of this, and I think having it in a separate legal entity, and maybe Joe can comment on this as well. Um, it would afford extra protection, uh, you know, from our auxiliary, uh, obviously they get insurance. Liability, all that. Be just a completely separate entity on its own. Excuses on the property, they would come to our auxiliary, uh, they'd come after the private entity that's running the building. And, and, and there's so many ideas that go with this that I haven't got into, you know, as far as the use of the building, um, we build the second floor and turn it back into a meeting hall, the old fireman's meeting hall. We are cramped for space at our station, and just for example, last night, we had two meetings going on, the Exorin meeting, we had our nine eleven committee meeting. Uh, I had ten of us that had to sit in the back of the bay and pull the truck out, now so we could have a separate meeting space, um, this would be additional meeting space that we could utilize for the town. There was talks about maybe having it rented out for, for families that have a children's party, how cool would that be to go to the firehouse museum and rent the second floor for a children's birthday party, and that could be an additional fundraiser. Families. There's all kinds of different things that you could utilize of the build, and certainly we would partner with the museum and open it anytime the museums are open, festivities downtown, um. I just think it would really be a nice spark to the downtown and, uh, once the new sidewalk project goes in, uh, Halloween's going to be different, I mean, we could have hand up candy at the firehouse museum, how cool would that be? Um, I could go on and on, but.
My only concern is that I have to be protected through the insurance, I don't know if they would add me as an additional insured. Uh, but I have no problem financing, owner financing for seven years. The only concern at the moment is the contractor did remove the metal roof. They'll put it back, but that's out of my pocket. I don't have a ticket for it.
Yeah, um, but I'm sure there's something we could, you know, step in and achieve. Get it back on, because you're right, that would save further, um. With the town's support, be, that, as a backup plan. And I'll work with Mary on, on the sideline, uh, and then keep you guys informed of any decisions that are made before they're made.
I would certainly be in favor of that. And. I would also say that, uh, you know, uh, I'd be curious to know when our. Our new TIF language takes effect, and that's going to be some time, um, whether we could take a second look at. How this type of, uh, entity and use of the property might fit into whether it's a facade improvement grant or it's. Something else that we could do to, um. To, uh, help the program, help, help the idea come to fruition. I mean, it seems to me like the, uh, the, in twenty thirteen, when that TIF was put in. Uh, it was to help blighted properties in the downtown area, that was the general. Uh, direction when the TIF was created, it's unfortunate that we can't. Make it fit, given the circumstances and the language that we have today, but. Uh, certainly moving forward, I would be in favor of figuring out some way to make it. Make it a viable, well, help make it a viable. Uh, endeavor.
It certainly would be more possible to use facade grant if it was owned by somebody else, if it's. If it's not a town-owned property, it puts it into a different category, just like everything on Main Street, but if we own it, we can't use. The sheltered money that would sheltered for our own benefit, you know, yeah, so that's, so it may be eligible.
For you guys to help us make the purchase because of the time.
Right, yeah, no, understood, yeah.
Get that out of the way, gives us a little more extra time. Go to the next step and, and uh, that's not gonna happen, so you gotta, rather do this other option, but certainly in the future. Uh, TIF month, TIF monies, you know, through the facade grant or the roof, you know, we talked about, you know. It's roofs that face the roadway might be applicable and whatnot. Certainly, I, I, the unknown is working with the main cabin masters, I mean, ninety percent of this restoration may be covered, you know, and.
So the other, the other thought is, and again, we've got some hoops to jump through with the revision to the TIF. Language, but one of the provisions in the TIF language is uh, protection of lakes and waterways. Uh, i- in Monmouth, and if part of the plan is to pick that building up and move it back. From the stream, then uh, there, there, that, that part of it might be a rationale. Or uh, for us to be able to participate if it's owned by someone else.
Sent me first storm took a toll on that wall, it's, it's moved more. From, just from me walking by it each day and looking at it when that water was up, I mean, that wall is. Boeing, and from the discussion you and I had, that part of that is town property anyway, so.
This building actually sat directly over the stream.
Yeah.
If you go up to the second floor, if you get around the corner from the stairs and open up what looks like a closet, when it's released to hang hoses.
Oh, we go right into the stream.
So her father used to have it on this.
Yeah.
Well, and it seems to me like if you and Mary can figure out something that's mutually agreeable. That this would certainly be consistent with what Earl Flanders had in mind for the downtown area of Monmouth.
Any other comments?
Or is, is there anything the town could acquire, like as a historical property? Like through the state, using it as a historical property?
Can't choose to spend money without the town voting for it, so. That can't happen, we can't at all.
Right, yeah.
We cannot choose to spend money, the five of us can't say, oh, we'll spend seventy thousand dollars tonight, we can't do that.
Like, to be honest, you haven't been part of this discussion, but maybe. Talking about how we don't think it would be in the best interest, but have it in the town indefinitely. You know, because every year we'd have to go, you know, for appropriations or expenditures. If we have more ownership of the building, it's gonna be less, less work and hoops to jump through in the future. You know, just redesigns or whatever, upkeep of the building. Alright, any questions, fire department general?
Any comments from? I, I talked with Dan earlier this morning, um, I, I don't see a, a negative impact to the town. Other than the, the two pieces of property come off the tax rolls and we don't collect tax revenue from them anymore. Uh, but if they both become vacant lots, um, and it goes a year without any new buildings on them. Um, they're not real valuable and there's not gonna be a lot of tax revenue generated anyway. So it would be, I literally pennies per household for those two lots coming off the tax rolls.
So it's one lot, it's a one, a one quarter acre lot.
The whole thing, yeah, so it's, yeah, it's gonna be minimal and. There potentially are a lot worse things that could happen, um, were someone else were to buy the property, um, and. It, it could turn into a fiasco down there, so I think it would improve the looks of the area up in order.
Actually, chief, I, I have uh, an unrelated fire department question.
Sure.
So uh, the topic of uh, class action lawsuit regarding. Uh, the, the manufacturer of foam.
Yeah.
Came up when we were talking, I went to the Water Association meeting uh, this past Saturday. Seven AM, why weren't you there? I'm kidding, uh, so uh. We, we've been working through a number of different funding sources for trying to help get uh, uh muster the funds for the North Monmouth. Uh, uh, water loop.
Yep.
And one of the ideas that was floated at this most recent meeting was the potential. For the town to join a class action lawsuit. Uh. To try and recover whatever we've already expended. Uh, and potentially more uh, in terms of the cost of the North Monmouth loop. Um, through joining a class action lawsuit. Apparently, there are a number of different uh, law firms that have started the process. And they're looking for plaintiffs. And the topic of the North Monmouth. Uh, uh, fire station water test came up.
Yeah.
And the question is, could that have been caused, caused by? Uh. Foam. Uh, that was used either in practice or a drill or, or, or something released. Uh, into water table near the uh, North Monmouth Fire Station.
You guys want my lawsuit?
Yeah, no, probably not.
With the law, who would it be again?
So lawsuits right now are focusing on the manufacturing of the chemicals. Um, uh, it's kind of like the. Yeah, very similar to what you see with asbestos type products. Where if the manufacturers were making these products that were then sold to places like Tex Tech or other places. Um. Uh, with the knowledge that they were hazardous. Uh, and selling them anyways, which is kind of the asbestos story, right? They knew it was hazardous, they sold it anyway. And uh, anyway, the, the bottom line is, um.
They knew that, they knew this was.
Well, that's a matter for the courts to decide, we don't, we can't say one way or another, but there. Appears to be enough evidence for some, some people to believe that they did, yeah, that it was hazardous.
I, I have two points, one, um, if we use that. Uh, station as a training ground, training facility, sure, that could be a possibility.
Yeah.
That's not where we train and A triple F foam, I mean, it's been so long since we've used that product.
Sure.
Uh, secondly, we openly announced to the town that. We might have caused PFAS to get into the water system in North Monmouth. Everybody on North Main Street that's currently got water problems is gonna be, we open ourselves up to potential liability as a town. I'm concerned about that.
Okay.
But I, my initial response was, no, I, I don't think we would qualify. Sue that class actions. Good thought, I mean, you know, additional monies, but.
Were your ho- hostess thing down there or?
I deal with this every day, very, but, but let's deal with foam, uh. Believe me, we spent hours and hours over this, this whole situation. Uh, it's true, it was in A triple F. But I don't know that anybody could prove that the manufacturer knew that the PFAS was gonna do what it did.
Yeah.
Uh, it's very expensive to get rid of the stuff, I can tell you that. We've got one barrel of it at the shop and they want four thousand dollars just to dispose of that. That's one barrel.
Right.
Uh. There's other PFAS issues uh, in the fire service, a huge lawsuit now going because it is in the vapor barrier in our protective clothing. Every manufacturer of protective clothing has PFAS in the vapor barrier, because there's no other way to make the vapor barrier work. So the, the same issue I think will happen with a foam is that you gotta prove that the manufacturer knew. That this stuff would eventually become a problem.
Right.
Years ago, when I was in the military fire service, we washed the floor with A triple F, because it was a great griefer rumor. Literally, we dumped the floor, used the floor scrubber, wiped it down the drain, you know, had luck.
Right.
It's what we did. You know, again, the foam industry uh, has. Made huge progress already getting PFAS out of the thing, out of the foam product. Uh, the company I work for, we represent, uh, we sell our foam product that is the first to ever be. Green screen certified, uh, and it's down to the point zero 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 one percent by weight. And, and the guy said, that's the owner of the company, we met him in Indianapolis a few weeks ago at a trade show, and he said, I don't know how to get rid of that. He said, okay, I tore out every piece of equipment I had in the manufacturing plant, I bought all new stuff. To make sure that that's not where the contamination came, he said, I can't get rid of that point zero 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 one, but he went to that green screen. And he said, that's far more, th- they look for all kinds of chemicals, not, he said, there's three hundred and some products that they look for. Be in that, that's, there are known contaminants. Again, right now, the state requires us if we spray foam someplace to actually. Lee knows what they're gonna do with the data, but they're entering it in the computer for somewhere down the road. I'm not saying PFAS is overblown, but you know, it's in your top order too. Well, it's, it's everywhere in commercial entity, I mean, PFAS is part of plastics.
Sure, it's in, it's in everybody's DNA right now, I mean, in your body, I mean, it's, they'll have a percentage of it.
So I'm assuming that this is an off topic, next topic, the camera on the. Uh, on two oh two, uh, Main Street and two oh two, there's a, there's like a game camera on a.
You just put that yesterday.
Okay, cuz I saw that there today, and then the cow, 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 car counter on Main Street, because, so was it in response to those?
There's one, they put, put it on Laysell Road.
Okay.
The counters there, on Main Street, there's a game camera down.
Yeah.
Two oh two, and on the stop sign right on the corner of Laysell and two oh two, there's a camera that looks down. It looks like they've got it aimed to like where people are passing and coming up.
Yes, passing on the right, going around, yeah.
Right, I think that's where they've got it aimed up, looking at the traffic.
I figured that and then I didn't, of course, I wasn't out and about last weekend, and since the fire whistle doesn't blow anymore, I never know when there's a call to listen on my scanner. So um, I didn't know about the accidents, so um, so I assumed, I assumed that's why they were there, but I wanted to ask.
A resident, a, a resident had called me and asked me to reach out. DOT, cuz she had called and, and requested a study there, because her daughter had been in an accident last year, the year before. And, and I said that I would talk to the chief and that we would send a letter to request that that get done. In the meantime, the next morning, on my way into work, they were already there, so I, I hadn't done anything yet.
So probably.
So somebody responded to, I think, the resident who called them.
Accidents, so.
I know, uh, like, the select board in, I don't know, it was like twenty nineteen, twenty, it must have been twenty nineteen. Sent a, a letter to DOT with a copy to the, the representative of the time. Um, requesting a study.
Okay.
So this is not a new, this is not a new thing, uh, and I'm glad to see they're doing something.
They, they just did the, the Blue Road, Bar Road intersection a couple months ago too.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, I had asked what was going on and nobody knew anything, and there was actually a state worker there one day, so I started to ask him and he says, it's just a traffic study. We don't notify people, we just put these up, it's a state rule, we wanna see how many cars, what the average speed is, it records all kinds of. So they're just bouncing from intersection to intersection, you know, report the data.
Yeah, so it may have been a coincidence or it may have been. Was it Monday I got the call, and Tuesday morning they were setting it up, so like I had. I, I, I didn't do anything.
Of course, you know I'm in favor of all that.
I do.
Our proposal, and I hope that you can work, this will work for Mary and the department.
I was, I was just hoping to put the town, you know. I don't know, Monmouth on our sign that said you guys partnered with us along with main cabin masters, I just thought that would be cool, but.
Well, you might win the facade grant or something, but. And my grandfather ran trucks out of there and so did my father, so yeah, that's.
And just think how cool the push-in ceremony, our old nineteen forty-two Buffalo Pumper back in its original structure, that's gonna be so, so much fun. And we'll have a nice big ceremony.
Yeah.
It's gonna be cool.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Would you like to take a bow for the uh, for the, for the playground work as, as the, as the rec person? One of the waterfront person, yeah, okay, yeah.
Um, but, so we are planning to open the beach on, well, put the docks in on the, open on the. Um, we are running full ramps this summer, so we're back to running water camp. We danced one last, last year, but we just couldn't do camp with the water. Um, in the meantime, we, between last meeting and this meeting, we. Wanted to get the playground in and we heard Dan and how he just couldn't get it done, all the stuff done and so, with all the work, so. We got together with a couple people and we asked um, for. Um, people to come forward that would volunteer, so they have insurance, there are companies um, all over. People from town, people from out of town that are willing to donate their time. And come to do the groundwork and we coordinated with the. Got a company that's gonna install the playground, and so the groundwork is gonna be done. And the playground will be installed and it'll be ready to go um, shortly after we open the beach in June.
What will that be?
Uh, it'll be ready to go by June seventeenth.
June seventeenth.
Um, give or take, we're still playing with a couple of dates on when he's going to actually install it. Uh, so we'll have the groundwork done, there'll be orange fencing up so that, um. You know, people don't go in there, cuz there'll be like a week or two in between the groundwork and install. And then we have plans for the, the equipment to come down to the beach. People that are gonna be there, because we have to unwrap it, um, you know, and none of this is, Dan doesn't have to do any of it. We have people that have volunteered their time to do it, just so that we doesn't get all the, with all the stuff that happened, we're volunteering, so we uh. You know, we just wanted to let you guys know that people in the town really want this playground and we're gonna make it happen, people, you know, people are volunteering to do it, so.
We actually had a lot of help for, uh, we had seventeen companies. All the way from Whitefield to Reedfield to Chelsea, from Buckfield, from Oxford, from Monmouth. Um, respond saying, when do you want us, we'll come do all the earthwork, don't worry about it. We, Dix Safe has already been contacted, they told us we had no issue in the world, make sure your soap fences up and. You guys go ahead and do it, so we went with Gardner Excavation, um. Logan Gardner owns that company, um, who are insured, does work everywhere, and um. He was, he was taught, him and assistant for top five Patricia at Oak Hill, so um, for him, it's, it's a way of giving back. So we have gone with Logan, um, for Gardner Excavations and we're finalizing dates for groundwork. Um, Eric has been absolutely amazing, the installer, so we are all working together um, to get this done and completed. For the twenty twenty-three beach season.
What, I just have one thing, if, if I should re-.
I, well, I was just wondering, since we're discussing this, should we jump ahead to the?
Ken, if you'd like to, yeah.
You wanna do that?
I just had a question about, um. Ian's not here to ask Dan, so I'll ask you, on Maple Street, there is. Piece of the telephone pole that was removed for the sidewalk work, that used to be in somebody's yard, that's now down on top of the sidewalk. In front of Cara's house, so. It's been there for several days. It looks like it was rolled down.
Rolled it off.
Off their lawn. I don't know why it was left on their lawn and whether they wanted it and now they decided they don't, but now it's on top of the sidewalk, so I just wanted to bring that.
Sure.
Uh, and while we're on the topic, there's also a piece of culvert uh, sitting in the bog by, on May Cumber Road. It's a scrap piece of culvert, I think they had to replace that someone complained about to me.
Well, it was late.
Well, the beavers got in there, caused some damage, the culvert, part of the culvert needs to be replaced and the part that got wasted is still sitting there.
On our agenda is to consider a memorial for Patricia Hosh at the town beach. Uh, it's, well, I don't know, I don't know, it's talking to me, but I don't know what the rest of the board. Would the this new playground be a, an adequate uh thing to uh as a memorial for.
Is there any sort of policy that towns use for that sort of thing?
Some towns do have policies, they have committees and stuff, this one does not that I'm aware of, so it would be up to you.
Usually it has been, yeah.
Well, I'm in favor of uh making a motion to name the playground after Pat Hash. He was instrumental in getting it approved by the town. And I think uh, the, you know, as a longstanding town employee, very dedicated to seeing that that whole area of town uh, be uh, productively used for, for the benefit of kids and families. So I'd make a motion that we uh, name the new playground in, in, in memory of Pat Hash.
Second, was the motion by, any other discussion? Uh, uh, the motion by Ken, second by Joe to uh, make the new playground uh, as a, to make it a memorial for Patricia Hosh. Um, and I, we probably wind up with a plaque and something that would uh, be appropriate to represent that.
The director of the rec committee still um, actually asked, um, I believe he was talking to you, Justin, I'm not really sure, but he had asked um, Lisa and I for approval, um, there was gonna be a bench. And I can read you what um, the rec director has suggested the bench say. And it says, with our greatest appreciation, this playground and bench is in loving memory of Miss Patricia Pat Hosh. Pat lovingly served on the Monmouth Recreation Department for two decades. The Monmouth community is grateful for her unwavering support and dedication to the town of Monmouth.
We know how the playground will be funded. What about funding? Would we be asked to fund the, the else or?
That's up to you to have a discussion with.
So I, I think part of Joe's thing was that it probably part of it would come out of the rec budget under our.
And where we're not paying the town or an excavation company to do any of the earthwork, the silk fence, anything. We are literally taking that on ourselves to make sure that this playground is set in place.
It might, it might counteract like, I, we hadn't gotten to those specifics as to how much like the chart, the town was going to charge to do the earthwork. Yeah, so what was accrued and what we paid for the playground.
I think there's kind of two ways to go for it, we could, we could identify some money in the rec budget and we could identify some money in your board contingency account if you so choose. And then if you wanna know how much uh, the bench will cost to purchase and all that, we can always bring that back to you to approve the actual dollar amount that you wanna spend, or you can just charge me with doing it, doing up to, or there's different ways you can kind of make that motion.
Can you give us an idea of?
I really don't know cuz I'm not sure what the idea was, so.
And then the engraving on top of that. No. Well, I think, you know, looking at the, obviously the town wasn't gonna charge the town to do the dirt work, so that was a wash. Uh, um, but um, having it come out of the recreation since it's at the rec department, yeah.
So I'll, I'll amend my motion to include the language that Joe has proposed. Uh, and uh, the expense of a bench to be funded from the rec account, not to exceed two thousand dollars.
There's two enough or, would you say, or three, would three be more safe?
We're holding your feet to fire you.
Yeah, we also, there's also, like, my dad created a fund, so that he, like, it can't be part of the town, but his plan is to give back to the rec, so. There can, there, there has already been donations to that, so.
That's okay.
Yeah.
And yeah. If we can get at least two thousand, we can make sure the rest happens.
This is in, the bench would be in lieu of the dedication to playground or was it tied in?
It's all tied in. Basically, it's just for parents to sit, to walk.
So we wouldn't need, we wouldn't need a plaque on the playground, the bench would say it all.
Right.
Okay.
And it would be located somewhere near the playground.
Right, it would be looking so that the kid, the parents can sit. Our idea is to have it be behind the playground facing the water so that they could watch their children play on the playground and still see the water, so they have multiple kids, they can see them. That is kind of the idea what Joe had.
So.
Bended your motion.
I did.
I consent to the amendment.
Joe agrees to the amendment, it says. So uh, all of those in favor of all this?
One last thing, Hugh, would it be um, wiser to do a plaque that is mounted to the bench or engraving, all that writing on that bench is gonna be another four thousand dollars?
Good point.
I know engraving is extremely expensive.
Yeah.
Depending upon the size of the bench, I quoted like the smallest three foot bench, just straight grain of legs. If you go bigger or more expensive, but would get more disparage if you do. There's not a way to go about it too, you could embed, um, we do a frequently, a black piece of of granite and laser the words, you get a lot more on that in a smaller space, those are a couple of different options.
Yeah, I know, at the fishing game, we had engraved done on a piece of granite.
Right, that's.
It was, but it was only, you know, forty-eight letters and it was a thousand dollars.
Yeah. First to the bench, the way it's set up, it's normally included in the.
The writings.
That was a different animal.
Put it all on the bench.
Okay.
No, that's perfectly fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next.
Can I just go back to the department reports?
Yeah.
All I wanted to let you know was at, at the Monday uh, town council meeting in Winterford, they appointed Anthony Wilson as the town manager and the only reason I'm telling you that is because he's already, he was the old town manager in Belgrade. The only reason I'm telling you that is because he has been instructed by the council, they also had an executive session with um, Chief Furland about the, the sharing of the police chief position and they are, they are all in favor of it and they've instructed him to draft a contract for both you and the, and the Winterford Council, so I've already engaged our, our attorney to get us a draft that maybe she could find from somewhere else. And then we'll work through those issues and then when we have something that we, uh, that Anthony and I um, think is good enough for you guys to review or bring it to you and maybe a little back and forth depending on how you feel about it, but that's moving forward at this point, just wanted to.
How's it working now? Are they reimbursing us?
Yes, they are paying us um, a per hour cost inclusive of his benefits, insurance and everything for the hours that he's over there on a monthly basis.
Let's use a model.
To these Monmouth employees, correct? And we would envision that that would stay that way.
Even after he?
I, I believe that's the way that the chief wants it to be. But we'll see, we'll see how that all works, I mean, I haven't, we haven't negotiated yet, but I think that's how we're gonna approach it to begin with anyway.
It's the way he wants to.
Yes.
And uh, it doesn't matter what Winterford wants or?
Well, it might, that's what I mean, we have to negotiate this, so I'm, I'm just telling you what the initial intent is, is to start from that position, we'll see. That's all I want.
Justin, you had mentioned something in your um, weekly, bi-weekly.
Okay.
It was that there was uh, new information on the audit, could you tell us more?
Yeah, oh, just that I have a draft of, of the audit, I just don't have the signed copy, it's, it's been approved, marked. They wanted to know if we wanted, we wanted management comments, and since it's over two years old, it didn't seem useful to put management comments, so now what we're waiting for is Casey, who's the lead auditor, you've probably met, he just has to sign it, so it's just sitting on his desk waiting for them to sign it and then they'll print it and then we'll have it. So it is done.
Will they, will they come and present it to us and ask questions?
Yes, I have requested that, once they finalize it, I'll ask someone from Marqueo to come and review.
Okay, and I mean.
And I know you would want, I'm sorry, I mean, have you typically done that in an executive session?
No.
No, now we do it in public session.
And Casey's always good enough to bring uh, things that uh, people who are not financial low.
Researchers?
People like.
Like English majors?
You know, like ordinary people.
As long as he does it. Yeah, okay.
Sorry, could, is it possible that we could see the preliminary?
Absolutely. I have it right in my inbox. Yep, I'll send it to you.
Yeah.
Uh, okay. Good, uh, the next thing was a select board reports. I think, yes.
I'll ask my questions.
All I just wanted to mention, I, I went to the RSU uh, budget, we're hearing uh, Monday night. Over at the academy, they do one in each town, uh, and Monmouth now was paying about thirty-one or two percent of the RSU budget, we're now be paying about forty percent of the RSU budget this year, if their budget passes the towns, uh, our increase will be three hundred and eight thousand dollars. Which is a, an increase of uh, five point two nine percent. And if, when you, when I, when you divide out the three hundred eight K, it means our, right now, I think we're paying about four hundred and eighty or so thousand dollars every month, it, it will go up another forty-six thousand dollars.
Gonna be over five hundred thousand, so the interesting thing when you've been reading all the stuff about this is that Dresden now has nobody to send their kids to, to high school, so they're either having to send them to, makes no sense, they drive right by Richmond to bring them to Monmouth or to Halldale.
They go to Halldale.
Which is a really long ride, when they could go to Richmond and pay tuition there, but they can't.
I think they always.
Cuz they're stuck in RSU too. Yes, because that's where they sent their kids, because they were part of the RSU.
But no, before the RS.
Yes, exactly, exactly. Or they could send them down to Wisconsin, but you know.
They've sent only seventy kids.
So what I'm prepared for is to Dresden saying, we're done. Tapping out, you know, we're gonna bus our kids over a half an hour each way and Dresden's already been on the move, so I think the next thing Dresden's gonna either close their school and be done with everything and tuition their kid.
To Richmond.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes it more sense.
Oh, yeah, so be prepared if that happens. We're gonna be at fifty percent or sixty because we're the largest of all the towns when you take Caldwell and Farmingdale and separate them, so.
The other, I don't think.
Well, yeah, and if, that report that came in the mail, it gives you all the numbers and all the number of students and all of that, but yeah. I think Dresden's got one foot out the door, so.
It could very well happen. Uh, I also find it notable that Richmond is uh, by withdrawing is now paying a half a million dollars more in educational.
But they're making their own decisions, that's the thing.
Well, that's, that's what you get, right?
Yeah, you get to make your own decisions.
And pay more for half a.
But in the beginning, but you don't know how it's gonna shake out cuz they're having to start
Well.
new, and whenever you start something new. There's startup costs and figuring it out.
True, but they're also hiring like three additional administrative.
But they chose to do that.
They did, absolutely, and Dresden might, I don't know, I mean, we'll see, I don't. I mean, I see a five point, what was it, five point two two nine percent?
What is five four two nine?
Five point two nine percent. We're all very aware that inflation right now is like seven to ten percent. Uh, we don't wanna pay more than we have to pay, obviously, but anytime you look at energy costs, you look at labor costs, labor costs are like eighty percent of the educational process, people gotta get paid. And uh, if you can beat inflation, the rate, the current rate of inflation, uh, I mean, that's why we were super slim on our, our part of the budget, right, our, what we proposed municipally. Um, uh, I'd call that a win, five point two nine percent compared to an eight percent inflation rate.
If this proposed legislation passes that all teachers are gonna make a minimum of fifty thousand dollars a year, that's gonna have a huge impact in the next year or two.
All your representatives, all your senators.
Uh, any select board reports, so?
Oh, I've got one small thing, um, a group of volunteers and I went and surveyed the Wagon Bridge area for milfoil. And the bad news is uh, it's come back a little bit, certainly not as bad as it was four years ago before they did a significant herbicide treatment of the infested areas. But it's growing in comparison to last year. And so.
In the channel?
Uh.
It's outside of the.
Yeah, it's not quite in the cha, I mean, there are little small fragments in the channel. Um, the biggest patch was like a forty feet by a hundred and twenty foot patch. Yeah, that was off in kind of two feet of water. Um, and it was pretty substantial. Um, the good news is that uh, there's a contractor scheduled to come and spend a couple of weeks with scuba divers to continue the regular maintenance and removal. Um, but we'll see, um, also in the north end of Annabaskook, they found another substantial patch. Uh, it's gonna be coming back. Uh, the surface use restriction um, was renewed for the Wagon Bridge area. Not from the, well, uh, DEP and IFNW weren't ready to do that. Um, they're gonna wait and see, they're gonna put up buoys up there to suggest that people not go in there with motorized craft. Um, but uh, we'll see. And the Lake Association, anyone who's a scuba diver, you wanna join the Annabaskook scuba diving Lake Association Club? Um, they're looking for people who might be interested in uh, learning how to remove plants and scuba dive so that we can get the cost of removal down. So that we can get the cost of removal down. Right now, the Lake Association, there's about fourteen thousand dollars of scuba diving, it's. Yeah, well, it goes beyond, you're right, but it goes beyond that.
Which guy was in the Coast Guard, who was uh, who would probably be interested in that?
Get some experience?
The uh, the owner of Skin Diver's Paradise has a lot of students.
Yeah, we've talked to him.
You have talked to him?
Yep. He's gonna be, he's gonna, he's, he's already partnered with people from Andrews Goggan Lake. To train up a bunch of volunteers that they have doing work out there. And we, his name is Ian, right?
Yeah.
Yep, so uh we went down there with him. A nice conversation, seems to be willing to give us a super uh primo deal on getting people trained up. And then there's a second part of it, which is you gotta go to a class to learn how to remove the plants in a way that makes sense. Right? You can't just pull them out, you gotta get the root ball and there's a process and watch out for fragments and all sorts of stuff, so it's a process.
I I did get a report from a fisherman who said the um channel under the bridge was completely clogged with grease. Um, they were catching an excessive amount of fish on the lakeside of the bridge, because the fish were not passable to get up the stream. They said there was thousands of white perch schooled right there by the bridge and it was not passable. You could not catch one on the uphill side, upstream side. But they were all on the other side of the bridge. I haven't gone to inspect it myself, but.
I wonder if we should mention something to DOT.
It's possible, or someone may wanna take a look at it. That was the report that I got, I didn't check it out.
It's still closed, everyone's calling?
No, it's open.
I was gonna ring it up during public comment, when I discussed it now. Morgan Bridge.
Yeah, sure.
What's going on with it? I I thought that was scheduled for this year and then now it's next year and then I just heard a rumor it could be two thousand twenty-six.
It was never scheduled for this year.
So what's the official?
It was twenty-four at the earliest, but they're kinda, they're kinda non-committal.
Yeah.
How about now that the thing's been undermined, we got new cracks and we got a forty-four thousand ton weight limit that.
It's open, it's open now, but i- is it forty-four or twenty-seven? Twenty-two.
Yeah.
So they've reduced the capacity.
And winter's ladder truck can't go, they're sixty-six thousand pounds, so we have less for winter's ladder. They're not gonna, or they got them all the way around. Maybe it should be moved up a little bit. Urgent matter, it's a, you know, and I, I don't know the weight limit, it's on our town trucks, I don't think. Well, if they're weighted with sand. And you know they've waited. On trucks, weighted.
I don't think I'm driving weighted. I know it's eighty-six weighs forty-three thousand seven fifty, we're, we're just a few hundred pounds on, you know, we get across it. But the two newest, then you can't go across it or shouldn't. Well, just go back.
From that storm, so and BOT's been buying nape ball for years, so. Moving things.
It's been one lane and green for weeks. It doesn't seem to be a real big priority. Put some stoplights up. They got a lot to do, that's for sure.
I can certainly acquire.
Yeah.
Just, I mean, I have the engineer contacts that.
Below, like eighteen inches below is a gurner, or like lowest beam and it seems like it's still great hitting. Bridge, so it can't be too low and then fish are backing up, tells you there's more of a stuff underneath. Hence why I tried to get them to raise the bridge.
Yeah, you would think.
I agree.
They do, the perch and different species go up the stream.
That's how they get over the dams.
They don't, they'll spawn right at the dam. Those fish will spawn right at the bridge this year. That's as far as they can go. They'll spawn right there.
Get your over and warm up.
Get all the perch you want, tiger trout, you name it.
I got a call from Ray Simon uh. And I, I don't know how pertinent this is, but uh. He, he says that our uh street, that, of course, the planning board has all kinds of problems with. Legal stuff uh wh- when they're. Uh, you know, discussing uh projects and so forth and the uh. Apparently the road and street ordinance that they're using is from nineteen ninety-six. And then uh, and this is also the same one that uh Public Works is using. But and I was wondering, apparently Ray was told, that's not our current. Or in street ordinance. And anyway, so that's one thing. And then there's a problem with escrow accounts, which the planning board and lots of planning boards, he says, use. Escrow accounts when they're uh working on different kinds of projects. And all they do is establish the account and then uh any money that's left over, they return it to the owner. But now. Uh, he said that our auditor, Casey or whoever said that uh. That has, they had to be done away with.
Uh, the auditor's not saying it, they're saying that it's not best practice and Mark has told us that this is not a good idea. It creates a liability on our balance sheet. So all that money that we have sitting there, it's not really ours, under our ordinance, under our fee schedule, it belongs to somebody else. So we have to track that on our audit. Uh, Mark has to track it on a monthly basis, it accrues interest. They have to separate all that. Um, not only every time someone in the office touches. Anything to do with these accounts. Technically, we should be writing down that they spent ten minutes making photocopies at their hourly rate. It's an administrative nightmare that is not worth it for two hundred and fifty bucks. And I would disagree. Um, respectfully with Ray that most towns do this. This is, this is, it, it does happen. I'm not saying that it's not, but it is unusual. I would say more than not, it's just a fee for doing the work. When you apply to go to the planning board, you pay two hundred and fifty bucks. Do they have five minutes? That's too bad. If you had a couple hours, it, it just is, it's just the cost of doing business. We have. We have, I think somewhere in the range of twenty to twenty-five escrow accounts sitting on the town books right now that are. Years and decades old, because most engineering firms or, or commercial entities don't think they're gonna get anything back. They send this in the mail, it's the cost of their project, they don't expect to get it back, and they never have come back to get it. We have no records to discern how much they should get back at this point. Um.
At some point, we're gonna send it to the unclaimed property?
No, what's actually gonna happen, because Mark can't do anything with it, is he's going to uh basically just wipe these out and dump them into the general fund. And um, because we can't. We can't determine, you know, what, what the liability is or anything, and they haven't come forward to get it, so.
So I'm understanding you, if I'm understanding you correctly, the recommendation is that we charge a flat fee. That has no reimbursement provision in it, it's just a flat fee. And it's administratively a lot more simple to.
That would be my recommendation, and it's also the recommendation of 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 Mark, who would have to track this. And if we want, you know. If he's gonna be tracking it on the books, technically, we should be keeping track of his time, trying to figure out, you know, how much belongs to who. The invoices that go out for postage and all that have to be tracked and then given to Mark so that he can reduce it off of the um. You know, off the total that's in the escrow account. There's just a lot of administrative um work for very little money.
Hey. I, I, I agree. Uh, the, the escrow account has been a thorn in Code's sides for years. Uh, and it's the planning board's own fault uh that most of this happens. Um, they put provisions in, in their decisions that create a loophole. Whereas the Code's officer is required to go back year after year after year to. Check compliance and report back to the planning board if something changes. Well. It's a nightmare, I, you know, I sit with hours with Mark before trying to figure out. How many hours I spend on cases that might have already been sold to another entity. That is no longer liable for the original. Decision in the first place. You've got it, you've gotta somehow just get rid of the escrows. It also comes into play with. They don't know at the meeting how many people they're gonna have to send certified letters to. If it's gonna be the part of the planning board to do it. So they can't figure out a fee, because they're ten dollars or twelve dollars for a return receipt for every one of those letters. So they're putting it off onto the applicant, but now the Code's office doesn't have enough time to sit down and look at the. And secretary to look and see if they're sending it to the right people. Or if they're in the five hundred foot. Stone around a circle, I mean, I, I drew a circle around them and pick all the, all the lots out. Well, they're not doing that, they're just letting the homeowner or the entity, the business say, okay, if it touches. That's enough. Well, that's not five hundred feet, that's touching, that's zero feet. You have to go to the other side of that lot. That could only be a hundred feet away and then go to the next lot, which could be another hundred feet away. It, it's a, it's a, it's a nightmare to do anything to do with the planning board and, and logistics and, and. Somehow you've, you've gotta just nip it in the bud and call it good, you know, at some point.
So how does that change, give me, do we just?
Steve sent me, sent me an email yesterday and said that, that their group member, he was here a little while, and they said they would bring back. Fee recommendations for you in the coming week. So when that comes, that will be your opportunity. The ordinance says that, that you, you set the fees. In uh, I can't remember if, if the word is consultation or, or agreement with the planning board. So at that point, when they come in here, you guys will have to kinda hash out whether to get rid of it. I think you have to come to a consensus on. On whether you wanna get rid of it or not, but then you make the vote to, to change the language. So it is up to you ultimately in the end. Nothing you can do on your own, they'll bring something to you later. I'm not, he indicated to me in the email that it would be a few more weeks, they're not ready yet.
Perhaps you should check with the town attorney. It sounds strange to me that we'd be able to sheet the money that's all the escrow. We, we just can't take it. I don't, I don't see how that could happen.
It, it, well, it's like Dave said, some of these people, they, they don't own the property, the people who apply don't own, own the property anymore. It's, and we don't even know where they are. I mean, some of these people are, I have no idea.
And Kenton might be right about the unclaimed property. Because it's not our money.
It might be, I mean, I seriously don't think that Mark really knows what to do with it, so it's just sitting there as a liability.
Uh, are we talking one thousand, five thousand or ten thousand dollars?
I don't, I don't recall at this point, I don't remember. This was when I first got here, it was on, it was on Linda's list of things for. The next manager to do, which was to get rid of the. Point, I looked it up and, and I didn't know what to do, so I haven't looked at it in a while, but I know that Steve mentioned that they didn't think they could get rid of them. And I think what prompted your, your email from Ray is I wrote back to all of them and said, you really need to get rid of them. So I think that.
It's not that much, it's, it's fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars. Right, it, it, and it goes down to pennies and it's still on the books and he still has to account for it, you know, so it's, it's just a nightmare.
Is uh, so it'd be class E stat.
It's not enough to buy your building. Thanks.
The other thing is the, the, uh, there's a time limit or when the applications have to be in, like uh. I guess that uh, they have to be, they're due before the planning board meeting. Uh, and I guess there's a certain timeframe.
Yeah.
And apparently. At a meeting recently, they were asked about this and, and there's nothing in the. That says there's a time limit.
Yes, there is.
Yeah. Like any.
Yeah.
Open, in any scheduled town meeting, it has to be a week ahead of time, correct?
Five days in, in the ordinance, I required ten because I couldn't do it in five, so now they can't do it in fifteen. You know, it's, it's, it, it was, logistically, you can't do what they wanted to do in five days. When it included days off and, and vacations and everything else, it never got done in five days, so I. Subverted that ordinance and made it ten when I talked to the people and said, you gotta get it in earlier than that. Then they changed it to electronic, and now you can submit the paperwork electronic, Code's officer doesn't touch it, it goes right to the secretary, it goes to the chairman. Maybe, maybe you can do it in five days. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but in the ordinance, it does say five days.
There's, so he, they don't have an ordinance apparently to look at, because of the meeting.
It's in the ordinance under, under subdivision or site plane review, it's under that on the comprehensive development order. When applications have to be due. And what application had, what has to be included in that application and how many copies have to be included in that application?
So it's, we, like the town's people voted on it and it was proved and it's supposed to be in there.
It's supposed to be in there.
Apparently they don't have. Copy of what?
Never had a problem, because it was, I could just do it and they wouldn't know it wasn't five days or. You know, if it came in in two days, I just did it and, you know, they had it. It, it's now that, you, 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 you've changed from four days or five days a week down to two. So you gotta remember, five days before, you might not have worked in those five days. You know, from Wednesday and Monday's a holiday to the next Wednesday, five days, he hasn't even been in the office. So you can't expect them to get the applications out.
We can make a copy of the ordinance, certainly, it's on the town website. If they want paper, I can print one. I mean, that's a, I just haven't been asked, so I, I would think that's.
But I don't know how current Ray, he, he always has an ordinance with him. He's looking at it, I mean. Maybe, I don't, I don't know how current what he has is.
I'm, I'm not sure, yes. The current one is on the, you know, the one when it's all put, but comprehensive development or the one that was all put together, that's on the town websites. I assume it's in there, right?
He wrote it, Ray. Hell, he wrote it, so.
But he, he was questioning me as to whether it was uh ever passed by the town. When it was passed by the town, uh.
It's on the front page of the ordinance.
I think it's two thousand nine.
It's on the front page and it was amended, it was done in two thousand nine and amended up through fifteen, twenty, twenty-one. I, you know, there's a whole list of dates on the front cover. Have to do, just read it. He might not have.
Twelve, two thousand twelve.
Twelve.
That's like, and then amended, no, amended again on July fourteenth, two thousand twenty, sorry.
It's not, I'm not dead. There's someone.
Have to find the right file.
Let them know.
Uh, next, nothing else, okay? Uh. Next is a public comment.
I just wanna make a comment on the addressing ordinance that you mentioned, Doug. That, that was done in the early two thousands, that was outdated. And Ray's, Ray's comment wasn't like nineteen ninety-six or eight or something.
That's the road, road and street and road ordinance.
It, it's in the early two thousands, if I'm not mistaken, two thousand, two thousand one, somewhere right in there. That, that addressing ordinance was brought up to.
It's not addressing.
The, the road, it's the same ordinance.
But, oh, I thought, I thought it had to do with.
Part of the street ordinance.
No, there's two. Addressing and road and street.
I'm pretty sure they're both updated in.
But they were always combined and it was changed in twenty because they changed the way they uh. The DIS came into play and they changed to the way they did it in Augusta, so we had to change. Or update ours to their way, because they couldn't accept what I was sending them, the way I was sending it to them. Street and road and addresses, so we had to change to the way they did it. That was, you're right, it was in twenty.
And that was just to make the nine one one system work.
Make the nine one si- one system, because they didn't wanna have hands-on, I could do it electronically.
Well, he's not talking about the, the, what kind of uh. Uh, the size of the road, you know, the width of the road, the uh quality of whatever is in the road, that sort of.
That hasn't changed in decades.
Okay. Maybe that truly is nineteen ninety-six.
It very well could be, that, that hasn't changed in decades, but in the ordinance are pictures of the hammerhead and circles and everything that the fire department requires. To do is turn around a fire truck. It's all based on a fire truck.
It's not the Woggin Bridge.
Where the Beaver Book.
Uh, it's still a three-rod road. The whole thing is still, that hasn't changed. Okay.
Any other public comment? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Heidi Allison Mishu, a long time Monmouth resident over thirty years. My father, grandfather, that's from. Little from Monmouth. I'm a small business owner. I own a. Medical cannabis retail store in Water Street in Hollowell and our growth facility is here in Monmouth. Between the two, we currently employ twelve people in addition to my husband and myself. And I understand that it's going to be a questionnaire going out regarding these types of businesses. So I wanted to speak to the board about. An issue that our business is currently facing. And that is that we are unable to apply for this medical cannabis dispensary license. Because in order to do so. The application states that. The town you're located in must have an ordinance opting in to dispensary operations. It wouldn't change anything about our business. It just alleviates a lot of the redundancies and. In its rules as being a medical caregiver. Operation and dispensary.
Ever. Opted in.
You go to the planning board for our, you know.
Yep.
But. Because currently. We have to essentially, my husband and I have to run it like two different businesses. Um, a dispensary would be able to combine it so that we don't have to do. Do separate everything. It makes it very cumbersome.
Only one person can. Medical marijuana store. Only one person can own, like if you're a husband and wife. You have to have two.
Yeah, so he has grow space, I have grow space. In the same building, it would stay the same. It's just that currently without this dispensary license, I have to do.
Has nothing to do with the store either. It's not.
Yeah.
A dispensary grow.
So I I have to do a.
So we need to, the town has to opt in.
So what you're asking is. For a license to do additional cultivation?
It wouldn't even be additional cultivation. It would just, it's just that it's what's required for dispensary application. And right now, we would still have the same square footage of grow space. It's just now some of it has to be his. Some of it has to be mine. He technically has to sell his to me. We have to do two separate sales tax returns, two separate tax returns. Two separate everything. Business records, the whole, it makes it very.
So we're not talking about a retail space necessarily.
No.
This is just a. A license that will allow you to simplify your.
If you opt in, you then you can sell. In the town. If you opt in.
Well, you can opt in to anyone. You can do grow, you can.
Don't believe that's a hundred percent. Watch in, you can sell.
Now definitely on it.
We can't opt in. Townspeople.
We're already that doing what we're doing.
Sure. So just a quick overview of where we are and where we're headed. Right now, we've not opted in for adult use marijuana cultivation, retail. Processing anything, right? Zero.
But but it's grown here in town.
It is because it's grown. From through for medical purposes and for medical purposes. For the most part, the state regulates that and not the municipality. And so the town doesn't have a choice whether to opt in or not. A dispensary license. For medical marijuana. Does. Uh, give the town the ability to opt in.
Right.
Right, requires the town to authorize it.
So it gives you guys even more control.
Right.
They have to say something. They have to have something on the book saying that, yes, we allow a dispensary.
We need to have an ordinance, essentially. We need to opt in and have an ordinance that.
You allow people to grow and we don't allow stores. You could set it up like that.
It does say Monmouth grows as you come into town.
So so uh so what's come up at the Economic Development Committee? In the past couple of meetings that we've had, and I think we might be having one actually next week. We'll see, uh, because there might be a facade improvement. Uh, application that we need to take a look at. Uh, we've worked on it. We're still finalizing. The draft is. To survey the townspeople at the June meeting to see where people are. Again, with uh whether they're willing. Or not. To opt in to some degree or not. And it and you're absolutely right. They could opt in for cultivation only. They could opt in for. Uh, cultivation plus one store or it could be like Manchester cultivation and twenty-seven stores.
Right.
Whatever. They get to, they get to choose, right? And based on the results of that survey. Then I think the Economic Development Committee can come back to. Uh, the select board and say, okay, here's. What we found and here's what we might be thinking about in terms of moving forward. I do think it's interesting. To hear that you've got six or a dozen employees, many of whom live in Monmouth.
Oh, yeah.
And uh that our current situation is. Making the operation of your business. More complex than it really needs to be. Right, um, so we're sort of. The lack of opting in to any degree at all. Is. Not business friendly.
It's up to the townspeople to decide, but they won't.
Of course, now that's the next step.
Us to decide.
Of course, so uh so the next step is for us to. Uh, polish off this survey and we've been working with Reagan on. The final language of that and we'll uh we'll we'll get it to a select board meeting before the June vote so we can take a look at it. And I, not only will we will we be handing it out in paper when people.
I think we got one meeting.
There we go, um, but we'll also be uh putting it up on Facebook.
Yes, and this is where he's asking you guys first because I our next. Our next thing will be having to do one of them refereeing them to get it put on the ballot by us. I would think you guys want to do that. You know, and then you guys get to choose what's. What we're voting on.
We would have to come up with an ordinance.
Yeah, I guess that's right.
I think the process that Kent is kind of mentioning is that be a survey. If it appears as though. There's interest, then perhaps there could be a group that, right, Kent, I'm trying to translate. That's when you would kind of figure out if you want to. Group to get together to try to draft one and.
Much like we did with the solar ordinance revision, like an ad hoc group. That would get together and put together some proposed language. That would be brought back to the select board. For us to take a look at.
And these are all over the place at this point, so you wouldn't necessarily have to reinvent the wheel. You may be able to find one somewhere else that.
I could very well, I mean, we've we've done similar things in the past for. Uh, pre-existing businesses, like when we revised the shoreline zoning. Uh, back a couple, three years ago for Camp Kippa. Um, we did it only affecting. Existing businesses in the shoreline zone. So that's a possibility.
There also has legislation that's trying to go through that. Yeah, some dispensaries. So I hate to not be one of the ones that.
Right, there's a lot of stuff going on.
Sure. Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming today.
Any other public comment? Uh, next is to appoint Lori Walker. The local health officer.
So I I can, a little funny story with this is the state called one day because Linda Cohen's email was bouncing. And um but they didn't say that. They just said the email is bouncing and I went, oh, well, we have new. I said, I I don't know. And they said, who is your local health officer? I said, I have no idea. So I went to the appointment book and oh, behold, it's me. So because I hold I I hold all the titles.
Yeah.
So I so I was I was kind of laughing about that and then Lori kind of said, I I I said, I don't know anything about doing that. In every town I've worked in, we've always hired some. Sort of third party person and they do, you know, half a dozen towns and that's just kind of how it is because you don't, they're not often used. And um. So Lori on her own volition went and just started looking up what the job was and she came back. She said, if you want someone to do that, I'll. I I already took the training because I thought I was just learning about what it was and it was actually the training. So I said, well, if you want to do it, I'll take it to the, I'll take it to the board. It's a it's a three-year appointment. If you want to do it, you have to appoint the person. Mostly what it is is it deals with usually codes gets called first and then if it's not a, if it's a, if it's a health issue, then she would. Mostly work with the state, uh, but there are regional people with the state and you just kind of work through it usually. Sort of with the codes officer, whether something needs to be cleaned up or 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 whatever it is, but she expressed an interest in doing it and. I don't see any harm in it, so I figured, why not?
I I took it on one, I don't know, two years ago. So it was always given to.
Yep, I just said. Yeah, I just said, I just kind of laughed when I I went to the book. I said, hold on a minute. I'll go see who it is. Oh, I guess it's me. So you can put my. No idea.
I make the motion, we appoint Lori Walker as the local health officer.
Second.
This is motion by Chris, second by Kent to point Lori Walker. As our local health officer, are all those in favor? Thank you. Next was consider. Uh, changing the town office hour.
So I'm bringing this at the request of the front office staff as you, as. My understanding is, um, what they request is is they'd like to reduce the number of Mondays that they work until six. Now, under our curtain, under our current. Staff that's out there, they each work over an hour away. So they're, so they're getting home sometime after seven o'clock at night. So I think that. They would like it to go away, but I said if there was, if there was a compromise, would it be okay if it was one day a month? They'd be very pleased with that, but obviously this is the. This is up to you. The hours, I think, were originally put that way because plumbing and codes was there from four to six at night. Neither one of them now work those hours. So I'm just putting it to you. It's just a.
So could we just go back, go from uh every day, uh, oh, four days, nine to five?
Good, yeah, if that's what you're comfortable with, I just wanted to. It's obviously a change, so I wanted you to make.
How much traffic did they get between five and six?
There there's still some there, but I would say that the. The traffic that's coming in probably, I I I wouldn't want to put percentages on it, but some portion of it is people that are still coming in thinking that. They can see the code of codes people for this because they're used to it. So I don't know. I'm not sure how much of it is convenience for people getting out of work versus just. Just people are used to that, being there for the for the codes time. So I I don't know.
So if you work in Augusta. And drive home, you'd be here at five thirty and you'd be able to go down to office one, one night a week.
Right now, that's the way it is. It's open until six on Mondays. We're open ten to six on Mondays.
Well, it helps people who uh work.
Well, I used to not get home until six o'clock, so I never got to come to the town office. I used to have to do it. You know, figure and I couldn't do it on Fridays, which was my day off, so. You know. My father worked at Bethany Works. He didn't get home till six thirty-seven. So, you know, the. I don't think that you you have to plan to. Do your business, whether it's online, which the majority of stuff can be done online, registering your car and all of that. Or uh, anything that can't be done online. You need to make an alternate plan, so.
You.
Still think there's a lot of people that. Like an off hour. And in the business time, I mean, I have to talk to a lot of municipal people and I listen to their hours to come on the phone and they're not open yet. They offer, a lot of communities offer evening hours or something out of the nine to five area. I understand people that don't want to get home on time, right? I heard with that, but. We used to have Wednesday nights where they came in from what, seven to nine or whatever it was, or six to eight or one, six, eight. I mean, I thought that was a little foolish. Getting rid of that, but I know a lot of it can be down the line now. Previously, that wasn't always an option. Also, I have a question, and this is kind of tied to that is. I think we had a token movement or gesture years ago when we produce the girls and I'm being exact at the. But um, why didn't. I think that was wrong. If they want forty hours, I think we should be offering it. Was always busy enough. Is it that slow in there now? I know I've seen over the years and it wasn't and I've heard it wasn't. It was hard to keep up. Maybe I'm not going to know anymore about that, but. I think if we hire somebody, there should be a full time position. I thought that was a little. Was a sacrificial kind of be, it was a lean year one time when we. Then we didn't reduce budgets and so we're going to show that we can do it too when they reduce. I'm pretty sure of memories where that happened. Is that right, Stan?
Yeah, they cut the hours back because times are pretty tough there when they went from five days a week to four. And when Ernie changed his hours, one Wednesday wasn't going to work for him. That's why I went to Mondays being a long day. And the one comment I was going to make was. You look at the calendar, there's a lot of Monday holidays. So what's the sense of being open late on Monday because sometimes Mondays are closed because of a holiday? So, you know, if you're going to make changes, why don't you look at the big scope of things? And is it a four-day week? Reasonable or should it go back to five? So that, you know, on the Friday, there's someone there or or having a longer day during the week sometime. Versus on Monday. Because when you look at the calendar, I know Thursday, Thanksgiving, you know, that's that day, but. You know, if we're going to do a late night, you know, because it is. Mostly the girl, girls, excuse me, ladies live out of town and I know they do travel over an hour. And, you know, hey, for someone that doesn't work late as well, I I get I get that. You know, and uh, so just, I think if you're going to consider it. Look at the calendar and say, huh, is Monday really the best day to be open late to start with? And, you know, when we went away from the five days a week. That was done because budget times, it's like we're decided to cut the hours back. At that time, you know, maybe we're not in those times anymore. Maybe if it was open on Friday, I don't. I hear, I hear that people complain if it's not open on Friday.
Exactly, and people that come to town.
You know, there's.
Because they own lake property and they, yeah, and they come on a Friday and they can't do whatever they need to do if they want to get something. You know, done at the town. So I think that we need to look at an overall picture of. You know, half day Friday or one, you know, once or twice a a month or something and try to figure out. If there's a better. Way to uh organize the hours at the town, at the town office. I think that that would. Because over the years, that's what I've heard too about Fridays, not having Fridays and people that. Come to Monmouth for the long, for a weekend on Friday, they can't get any business done, so. I'd like to have that kind of information.
Would. Since Monday is. Is an issue for holidays, would it be feasible to to have Monday closed? And have an hour later on Fridays once a month? It would solve both problems. You would, you you wouldn't have the the four weeks of late Mondays. And you wouldn't have to worry about the holidays on Monday. Very few holidays on Friday. And they could have Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday and Friday with one hour a month later on Friday for the people that come in from out of town or out of state.
People in town that want to go camp on Friday. You know, it's.
It opens a can of worms. Better idea of what the needs are.
I would be very hesitant to do something where we where where we have people since they do drive from an uh from an hour away to have them drive in. For an extra half a day because now you're you're adding, you know, you're adding gas to their.
Yeah.
Saying you're taking away their three-day weekend, which I think some of them have grown quite accustomed and it's it's actually a benefit to some.
Yes.
People depending on your situation, you know, so I think that. If this proposal's not good, that's that's completely fine. I can come back with other options or we can just leave it alone. It's.
I think it's worth looking at.
Yeah, okay.
Because I think Monday evenings, you know. Whether it's four days, uh, four times a month or whether it ends up being once a month, you know, but if we. I know that you mentioned that as well, so. Any other input?
I think, well, just to. I know it's difficult to find good. I know it's difficult to find good people. Work at a town office, uh, and these ladies, uh. Live far away. Have to drive an hour. Uh, you know, nine to five is, um. Four days a week. That would suit. If, if, if it's okay with them. Um, okay with me, but of course I don't have to work around. Coming from far off and have, have to do some. Town office business.
Yeah, for me, it's, I can go anytime, it's not. I can't say it's ever been inconvenient, so.
You.
The current employees, do they ever, uh, express any interest in additional hours? If, I'm just curious if they. Are disappointed that not a forty hour offering?
I think it's kind of a mixed bag, if I were to be honest, yeah. And I don't know how each one individually would, you know, would react if we, if we went back to five, I don't know if someone would leave, I, I don't know, I don't. I, I don't know the answer to that, I could find, I could certainly ask, I mean, that's not a.
I mean, wouldn't it be feasible just do, do a poll amongst the employees and say, what would, what would you prefer for a schedule? And if it's, bring it to the board and see if it's feasible?
I don't know that they have plenty of them for.
Sounds like they want to get rid of that one hour, so. I think the question should be, is, just table this for another two weeks.
Exactly.
And then see what kind of volume of traffic they're getting on that hour, and if it's very low. I don't have the hour off.
Yeah.
They must know now.
Yeah.
What did they probably? We have a set, the reason I kind of had given sort of the compromises, the, as the first Monday of the month is because obviously the beginning of the month is always the busiest because people, their, our registrations expire. Or whatever else expires, their, their trailer or whatever happens, and that's when they all. Go up as early in the month, and that's just. Our first week of the month is always busiest unless it's tax due date, you know, because the rest of the time is kind of, you know, ebbs and flows.
Yeah.
I can tell. Yeah.
Is, is next Monday Memorial Day?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the town office will be closed.
Yeah, so. I, I think, you know.
Makes sense to table and I think.
Commerce ask.
I can try to get, I can try to bring more information.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And next is to consider an event application for the community night out. This is, uh.
On the beach party.
No, the, no, the.
That's number eleven.
This is Dawn's.
Kind of like the National Night Out and everything.
Yeah, we're changing it over because we don't use. Their logos for anything other than that, so we, we really just want to change it into. Community Night Out. It's really a lot of money to buy into National Night Out, actually, or money that we've never had to begin with anyway, so. Just really want to change it, yeah, we just really want to change it to a community night out, but we are asking for. Money, so if I heard at a meeting here that. It might be money available for a, a community event.
Yes. And it's always been really well attended, I think it's grown too.
They're trying, they're trying to make it grow, we, we are. We are, so, so th- this money that we're, we're asking for, because we like to. Make it into, for something permanent, so we would like to be able to get some. Their signs. I don't have specific amount of money yet, but as I had said to Justin, I'm kind of working with people that say, yeah, I have some, something in my attic that I think I can make something for you, whatever, so. We're kind of thinking that, you know, with, if we get anything, we'll work with whatever we get and make whatever we can make with it.
Well, from. From personal experience, you know, there's. If you're going to do. Like, how political signs are on the side of the road, small ones, but there's all kinds of places online that can make them for you. And they're, they're, and if you don't have dates on them.
Right.
And then you can just keep them and reuse them, and they're really pretty reasonable. And whether or not you're making, you know, a few for the sides of the roads and then having a big banner that's up. On your building or. You know, one that stretches across the, um.
Well, the, the banner that we use, okay, the banner that we use was originally made for the open house that was down at this PD.
Yeah.
And the letters on the bottom were peel doffs that said open house.
Yeah.
And I cut out a felt of the letters that said National Night Out to attach to it.
Yeah.
I mean, this is all come, you know, out of pocket, not out of town money or anything like that. So we are looking to get another big sign and perhaps long sign out of this that will say, first, you stay in August, that can be used. You know, year after year, after year.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, I mean, the places online that make them are really not that expensive for us. I think, um. Place out in Manchester.
Copy placement.
The copy, play copies, etc.
To the guy that did the cruisers, actually.
Yeah.
That, that we use, that's over in, uh, Wales, and we reached out to. To him who said, yes, I think I have some stuff in my attic that I can come back with a price for you.
Yeah.
On which I said, absolutely fine, figuring that he, he kind of worked with me on it, so. He has not gotten back to me before this meeting, I was hoping he'd get back to me today, but.
Do we have an actual event application?
Yes, we do, yeah, it's on, it was in our package.
Just for the public record, what is the dollar amount being requested?
I make a motion, we approve, uh, the event application for the community night out.
Yes, I'll second that, for sure.
Oh, I, I was thinking of, uh, what do you, you're gonna front?
Yes.
I, I was thinking of, uh. Well, Doug, would we get a banner across the street?
Yes, you can, yeah, right, for Mayfair. Do it for Mayfair, maybe the fire trucks can put it up for you. Exactly, ladder truck can just have a banner like. When, who were they bringing?
We need to stay and know if you have a ladder.
They had that funeral procession, right, for somebody when you had all the ladder trucks in the center of town?
Yeah, that, when do we have, Sabanas and.
Yes.
Assistant chief of. Went through and Saban. It was. You did that.
Yeah.
You did one of those a day or two ago in Bath because the, the police dog died.
Oh, yeah.
And they gave it a procession. Town.
Yeah.
Two towns?
Yeah, it went from Bath to Brunswick.
Yeah.
And they use the fire trucks to hang the flag up.
Yeah.
So Doug, I made a motion.
Yeah.
And, uh, so. Kent made a motion and Chris having it.
Yes.
But to, uh, uh. Uh, to approve an application for the community died out. All those in favor?
Yeah, thank you.
All you got to do, Donna, is you got to bring receipts, it's, it's an after the fact, so, okay, I just wanted to make sure that you.
And then on to, uh. Uh, to consider, to consider an event application for the Monmouth Beach Party.
Just for the public record, Justin, what's the dollar amount for the Monmouth Beach Party that's being?
Three thousand.
I make a motion that we approve event application for the seventh annual Monmouth Beach Party.
I'll second that.
And, and has this been approved by the, uh, town board?
This comes from tip funding, so we have the authority to do.
We have the authority.
Yep.
Even though it says a thousand dollars here.
Yes, now you have, y- y- you have routinely in the past, I believe, exceeded that for this particular event.
Yeah.
I know.
Yes.
This year is going to be better than ever.
Better than ever.
Ever.
And, and I made a motion and. Chris, I did again, uh, to approve the event application for the Monmouth Beach Party. All those in favor? And. And next is to, uh, for, uh, approve. Uh, this really, the warrant for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, twen- warrant twenty-three.
So these are, uh, the first one is Bangor Savings Bank, it's the town's credit card, it's IT equipment, training and, um. Office supplies, one thousand two hundred and eight dollars. Barry Talbert Royer, that's our business services, six thousand three hundred and twenty-eight. Blue Rock Earthworks Materials Transport, two thousand five hundred and sixty-four. Dennis K. Burke, guests and diesel, ten thousand six hundred and sixty-two. EcoMaine tipping fee, one thousand seven hundred and forty-one. This is a rental assistance payment under GA two thousand six hundred and twenty-five. Uh, Grimble Industries Demo Removal, twelve hundred and twenty-four dollars. Paul's Collision Center, two thousand thirteen Ford, two thousand one hundred and ninety-seven. Hood Farm LLC, these are culverts for the. Storm damage, one thousand eight hundred and sixty. Main Technology Group, IT support, um, and, uh, some phone equipment, three thousand seven hundred and two. Main waste to energy tipping fees, four thousand three hundred and fifty-eight. Uh, main purse, retirement, four thousand seven hundred and sixty-three. Main Municipal Employee Health Trust, health insurance, twenty-one thousand four hundred and eighty-six. Nickerson and O'Day Academy Project Expenditure, seventy-eight thousand seven hundred and ninety-five. Harris Farmers Union, calcium chloride, four thousand seven hundred and sixty-five. Paul Design Project Architect for the Academy Project, two thousand one hundred and eighty. RSU number two, four, four hundred and eighty-six thousand and sixty dollars. State of Maine Bureau of Motor Vehicles, twenty-one thousand seven hundred and forty-eight. State of Maine Department of Inland, Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, six thousand six hundred and eighty-five. Winter Police Department for Dispatch Services, twenty-nine thousand three hundred and six, three hundred and seventy-six. For grand total of seven hundred and ten thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents.
The motion, we approve. Uh, warrant twenty-three for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
Okay. Motion by Chris, second by Mark to approve. Warrant number twenty-three fiscal year. Twenty-two, twenty-three. All those in favor?
This motion, we adjourn.
I'm second.
I was adjourned.